Okay, hello, hello, welcome everyone. I think it's on live at this moment. Yeah, let's see if it's online. Yep, okay, good. Okay, so good morning and good afternoon or good evening. Wherever you are joining from, I'm Moaz from Akino and I'm excited to be here for today's session. First of all, welcome to the Sitoria online study session. It's a pleasure to have you with us today. I'm thrilled to introduce Sitoria as part of this Bristlestone program, designed to foster the next generation of groundbreaking crypto applications. So let's start with what's web hack first of all. So web hack is a building Bristlestone program that supports innovators like all of you here today in bringing your idea to the market, your idea to the market and backed by top tier partners where that provides grants and expert feedback to help you take your project to the next level, whether you are starting something new or expanding existing projects. This time, the Sitoria program kicks off on June 20th, June 20th, and with a 10-day building period and a four-day judging period. So participants will work on their projects through the program and those that are evaluated highly by the Sitoria team will get an opportunity to pitch at our upcoming demo day, which we've announced in the future web. So yeah, today we are thrilled to have Jason and Talib from Sitoria leading this well, from Sitoria leading this workshop. Sitoria is a layered solution on Bitcoin that uses CK rollup to enable fast, secure and scalable smart contracts, fully compatible with Ethereum apps. In other words, it's CVM compatible, so you can use Solidity to build on Sitoria. So yeah, we were, they were into the section or explanation. So in this engaging session, Jason and Talib will break down what Sitoria is and how to build on it. So they will walk through its key feature with practical examples, making it easier for you to build the apps. So we'll also have a live Q and A session at the end. So feel free to comment on YouTube. Throughout the session, we will try to address as many questions as we can. All right, yeah, please know that Sitoria, your theme is to build the apps on Sitoria. So this theme challenges you to unlock Bitcoins' potential with secret technology. So this is a great opportunity to contribute to Sitoria's growing ecosystem, showcase your technical skills and present your innovative ideas. So right now is a perfect moment to start preparing your project before the Sitoria kicks off on June 20th or even earlier if you are ready. So we are excited to see what you build and how you revolve it. Yep, so but now without further ado, let's welcome Jason and Talib to share their insights and expertise. All right, Jason, Talib, thank you for, thank you so much for joining us today.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Yeah, we are excited. Yeah, thanks, thanks guys. So we're all excited to learn more about Sitoria. So are you ready, guys?
Yeah, for sure, let's do it.
Okay.
I'm taking over then, right?
Right, the stage is yours now.
Okay, then, let me share my screen as traditional. So you see it here. Everything clear?
Yeah, everything clear.
Okay. Hello, hello, then, welcome everyone. Yeah, really excited to kick off the things going. Really excited with Akino and all your cool devs in your ecosystem. My name is Talib and today I will go over what we are doing, what interesting things are happening and I will do it specifically for you guys in the Akino way back. So just some background to start things off. My name is Talib, I'm the developer engineer at Citria. I was the first hire in the team as the engineer. I was working on the protocols client implementation and then I, before that, I did some bunch of fintech work, some data work in a bunch of companies. Yeah, now, right now, I'm working as a developer relations engineer, which means I dedicate most of my time to developers, as one can expect. If you have any questions, anything like, you know, you can find me in the Discord, you can find me on the Telegram, you can also type in the chat as well. You know, so that we can do it when, once the Q and A session comes up, we'll try to ask your questions as well, Jason too. Yeah, in my part of the presentation, I will go over a bit cultural, a bit technical stuff. I tried to keep it explanatory enough, but if you don't understand some stuff, it's also, okay, just ask me a question should be a message. Yeah, so let's start, let's say, today. Yeah, today we're going to talk about a little bit Bitcoin actually, which can be natural given we are kind of a Bitcoin scaling solution. And then I will explain what we do and then what makes me super excited on what we're building. And then I will go over some differentiators to ask between similar solutions. And then I'll explain a bit of what the feature holds for you, including this program as well. So I guess the first thing first that we shouldn't forget is Bitcoin is Bitcoin. And you know, when I say this, I'm not actually, you know, this is an important sentence because this actually, it's an important value and important feature that we should never forget. So what I mean by this is, you know, Bitcoin is kind of the, ideally the most popular solution that we have today in terms of everyone knows about it. And it's like paper, it makes things off and then we all respect and know it. It's a very cool, very nice paper. And the price keeps increasing. I took screenshots some time ago, a couple of weeks, but you know, everyone loves it. Some people love it for the price sake, which is understandable. But you know, compared to the rest of the industry, it's clear that it's kind of a clear winner. And everyone knows it, like every country knows it in the world and politicians know it. And now companies and countries are trying to kick off some, you know, national reserves that's based on Bitcoin and even more ideas like Bitcoin max table coins and whatever. So it's kind of, you know, well recognized by everyone. And we don't know who Satoshi is. I think this is the feature. Because the moment, like if we knew Satoshi, then I think his decisions or their decisions, I mean, and their thoughts would be extremely influential. But then that would arm the decentralized, you know, kind of neutral aspect of the network. And thanks to Satoshi being anonymous, I think it's a very, very impactful and useful thing that we have today in the industry. And you know, assuming things will continue this way, I think this is a feature. And the identity of Satoshi should be respected. So you know, if you're kind of a very cool guy in terms of finding people who they are, I would suggest still not to talk about who Satoshi is even, because this is a value that we respect. They chose to be anonymous and we kind of tried not to reveal it. And you know, in the recent months, the more BTC demand has happened, everyone tries to buy Bitcoin from one way or another. And there is even now more and more paper BTCs by, for institutions, by institutions. So yeah, it's kind of a very solid asset in terms of buying and holding. And you know, but while doing all of this, I think one thing that we should not forget is all of these came as kind of the ideology of getting out of the, you know, the typical capture of traditional finance. It's kind of, this is kind of a resistance to the some values that is, I think, we shouldn't really embrace. And we should always remember that the key point of Bitcoin was to replace all the influence and power of centralized entities. Never ever forget this, I think this is very important. Yeah, so I basically shield Bitcoin naturally. But then there's also some limitations that I didn't talk about. So there is actually a bunch of limitations of Bitcoin today. So if you want to do more with Bitcoin other than buying it and holding it like gold, then you encounter some problems. If you want to use it to do some loaning, to do some lending borrowing stuff, then probably, and actually you have to go to a custodian. That means you need to give your funds control to someone else and they should be handling some of the things for you. And if you today want to do vaults, same, you need to go to a company. If you want to enable privacy on Bitcoin, then on the base asset of Bitcoin itself, you don't have much of an option. If you try to buy sell Bitcoin or even the payments with Bitcoin, sometimes to do things much more practically, you go to a custodian. Actually, this is a risk because everything about this world, about the Bitcoin world kind of stems from the fact that, you know, you should be, you should have a self-sovereign money that is not captureable. So when you think about this, actually, all of these Q and A's, when you try to more with, do more with Bitcoin, it's kind of hurting it at least. And not only that, but also the programmability of Bitcoin is also not in the way that I especially personally want it to be. So on the right, you see a solid smart contract. And then on the left, you see a Bitcoin script, this on some UTXO. You know, the thing is, even though this code on the right also gets compiled to some assembly-like language, the problem is its limitations are much less. So when you check the client implementation of Bitcoin, which is in majority Bitcoin core, there are a bunch of limits that is enforced on the rule set of the consensus level. And these rules actually combine with the limitations of the language itself, limit you on what the things that you can do. And we believe that, especially I believe that this is kind of a very limiting factor. So if you try to design protocols on direct Bitcoin itself, then you kind of hit these limits and problems and it becomes a bit frustrating. And even if, you know, you manage to build this, then the fee environment of Bitcoin is not really stable. Sometimes Bitcoin alone becomes extremely expensive. Nowadays, the Bitcoin blocks are empty, so which is good, but it's not always the case. And you know, as the demand increase, actually, sometimes fees increase dramatically and stay that way for a long time. So doing things directly on Bitcoin alone is kind of not very easy. And you often get frustrated to do it, you know? And this is common among many hackers and many people. So yeah, one particular solution is maybe just like a theory, we can upgrade Bitcoins, right? Well, this is not really the case because upgrading Bitcoin is really hard. The reason is because Bitcoin is kind of a decentralized asset and because it's, you know, arguably the most secure asset, you don't really want to introduce risk factors. So because of this hesitation, the number of upgrades that we get to Bitcoin is actually very limited in terms of forks. So the number of the crucial changes that can impact the network by getting a breaking feature is very less. Indeed, the latest one was interpreted upgrade and it was like four years ago. So the frequency of changes to Bitcoin itself on the consensus level is actually very, not something you see often. So that's also why kind of you cannot do much changes to Bitcoin and you cannot expect it to be converted into a shape that you wish to be. So yeah, but still there are people who wants to do more with Bitcoin, right? It's not only me that wants to spend or use Bitcoin in the way that I want. It's actually a bunch of people that wants to do it, a custom girl, float. Then people kind of came up with the idea of using other layers, right? If you're kind of aware with the notion of sidechains, nowadays, today on Bitcoin world, we have sidechains. And the sidechains are different compared to rollups. So the thing you see on the left is a sidechain where its execution happens. And then occasionally, and a commitment of its state, it's a hash, let's say, or some other calculation, but at the end of the day, a small piece of data gets posted onto Bitcoin. And then as this data gets finalized, that means as we get sure that this data cannot be changed on Bitcoin itself, then we claim that this is finalized and you know, this is the state of the network. Comparing this, like the diagram on the left is sidechains and the diagram on the right here is rollups actually. Compared to this, the rollup, for the rollups, you either publish full transaction data or the state differences of the execution or some relevant data that's at the end of the day capable, that makes you capable to just read the L1 itself and then sync from there. So kind of making Bitcoin is the source of truth. I'm going over this, which you will see by. And you know, I talked about other layers and there's actually a bunch of demand to the other layers on Bitcoin as well. You know, this is kind of a report from Galaxy research team. And, and the numbers are actually now, I think, even higher. So people are actually trying to use Bitcoin in other manners too. There's huge demand and I believe in total, like, you know. So this is a website called Bitcoinlayers.org, you can check it out, it's a very cool website. We are not featured on it yet because we are not on mainnet yet, but we will be. So if you check here, like actually, as you can see, the supply of Bitcoin on other protocols is actually, at the time of screenshot, it was $30 billion, which is a huge number. And so people are trying to do things on alternative layers. But the problem is, these alternative layers today are not as secure enough, especially for me to use, for example. What I mean is, on sidechains, there is this typical problem. Sidechains do not inherit the security of the base layer. What I mean is, if let's say something happens to sidechain full nodes or, you know, any entity that holds data, then you, as a full node runner and as a user, you will not be able to recover your state or you will not be able to observe what's going on in the sense of sidechain consensus. And they also have their own consensus algorithm, which for the most of the time, it's nice, but still brings some risks as the sidechain comes up, a whole different implementation. And you know, if something goes wrong, then you cannot use Bitcoin as the source of truth. If your computer reaches the Bitcoin and asks about its balance, you know, how much balance does Solid pass? For this question, if you ask it on a sidechain for two Bitcoin, then you will never get an answer because all you have is a hash here. Whereas in rollups, because you published the necessary data, like Merkle 3D's or the full transaction data, you will be able to sync and read the state using the L1 itself only, which is actually in terms of the security, a massive upgrade. Yeah, so I prefer and theoretically many people in the agile ecosystems also prefer rollups in that sense, beside chains, because it inherits the security of the base layer. Yeah, because rollups are superior, you know, the question is kind of, can you build rollups on Bitcoin? The answer is actually yes, you can build CK rollups on Bitcoin. You cannot really build full data posting rollups, which are kind of optimistic rollups on Bitcoin. Because the reason is the data gets too big and the Bitcoin block size is four megabytes in every 10 minutes. So you, if you try to publish full transaction data, full state data fully, then you will not be able to do it. But you can actually do CK rollups. What it means is, you will have a sequencer that's publishing blocks and ordering transactions. And then you will have a approver which proves the execution. And then you can publish the state differences of the Merkle tree plus the ZK piece to Bitcoin. And it works actually, it's kind of sustainable. Based on our benchmarks, it's really reasonable. And the trade-off is, the more data you push, then the more, you know, the more time the ZK proof generation takes time. So it's kind of a trade-off between how fast you want it to be and how dense you want it to be, so that you need to, you know, finalize things. It's kind of a trade-off. But yeah, the moment you send it to Bitcoin DA with state differences, then it actually becomes reasonable. You can have your chain data remaining on Bitcoin and as long as Bitcoin is secure, which probably will be all the time, I would say, hopefully. Then your data will always be there or remaining and everything will be continuously good. And yeah, like the way, one, another way to do it is one can use zk stars to generate proofs and then convert to zk snacks. And with this construction, as I talked in the last five minutes, you can get a sovereign zk rollup design if you're aware of it. It's possible now. The reason I know it is because we did it. So currently, Citria is a rollup that's live on Bitcoin testnet four. And we are aiming to go to mainnet. That's also particularly why we're working with Akino and you guys to come up with cool projects and products and ideas, so that we can even make this even better. You can check our website at citria.xyz. So this one is currently live on Bitcoin testnet four and the current architecture looks like this, if you want to see more visualized diagrams. There's a sequencer that publishes, that orders transactions, then publishes blocks. And then a approver basically takes this data and generates a proof for it. And also like distinguishing the state differences too. And then this data gets posted on Bitcoin. So as long as Bitcoin is secured, then this data is secure too. And then if you, as a user, is like running a full, a rollup full node, then you can just use Bitcoin to sync and, you know, to read what's going on. So it's kind of uncensorable in that term. Whereas on sidechains, if your RPC blocks you, then you have no way of accessing the data. And the block times of Citria is two seconds and the sequencer cannot steal your money. And also like the approver for the approver, we use Viscero Pompous. It's a very cool tech to, very cool company to work with too. And the thing that I didn't tell you so far is, all of this is on the Citria side, it's actually an EVM compatible chain. That means if you're an EVM developer who knows Solidity, who knows Viper or who is correct enough to use Yule to do smart contracts, you can continue to use these. So Citria itself is a chain where it's EVM compatible, it's a type 2 ZK EVM. And it's your smart contracts on other chains, you can just use them and then it will also work for us. The only thing is the currency of the chain is Bitcoin. So because this is a Bitcoin rollup and we believe like the whole landscape of things should depend on Bitcoin too. So the gas token of it, gas account, gas unit of it is Bitcoin, which we call Citria Bitcoin. It's not a wrapped token, it's the native asset and you can just use it. It's a very practical of doing things. Let me think about something so far, is there a thing that I skipped? I don't think so, I think like this is a good summary. Again, if you're an EVM developer coming from the Ethereum ecosystem, you can just use your own knowledge, existing knowledge. If you're coming from some other ecosystems, then the good news is you can always use the existing documentation of Ethereum chains or EVM. And then you'll be able to use it. And this is also Pectra compatible. That means we have 7702 support. You can use a bunch of, you know, account tip section stuff as well. And it's also, it also has 72128 support. That means you can do pesky wallets and stuff like that. It supports R1 verification and more. We have some stuff on the documentation that I will show you. And if you want to check the posts of data, essentially, this is the website that we have today. It's called citriadaausers.com. I highly recommend you to check it. I can also stick it for you to actually citriadaausers.com if you go there. So let's say, this is today's data posting. Yesterday, we posted six megabytes of data. Now, when you check the, when you check the transactions of yesterday, oops, let me check. Okay, probably some visual bug, yeah. And then when you click it, you can also see the transaction itself, if you're curious into it. I highly recommend. And then this is also what kind of the transactions look like, so it's very distinguishing. But yeah. So, and again, like, it also comes with a bunch of interesting economic decisions as well. So when you use rollups, and when you use Bitcoin as the source of rollups for DA, then you know, there's actually, it helps for the miners because it increases and it gives them some nice fees. And it also helps to secure the budget for this end a little bit. And the moment you get multiple rollups in Bitcoin, I think it's going to be an interesting discussion because Bitcoin will become sustainable, but then the fees will increase. So it's going to be an interesting dilemma for people. Yeah, now going back again a bit. I told you that there's a bunch of demand and a bunch of Bitcoin assets on other chains. But the problem is, how these value moved into other ecosystems? This is actually an interesting problem when you think about it. Because normally traditionally, when you move between chains today, what happens is you give your Bitcoin to someone else and then you hope that everything goes right. But what happens if everything does not go right? What happens if, if a multi-sig just steals your money? And then when you come back, you will not be able to find your real Bitcoin. But what happens is the answer is, some, you know, really bad things happen because the money is gone and you know, for an asset that's unbacked, essentially virtual money, and it sucks. So actually, you want these bridges of these older years to be as secure as it can be. Essentially, what matters is, what should matter is the security assumptions of the bridges to these layers. So far, I talked about what we did in terms of the rollup. And I didn't talk about the bridge. So there should be a good idea of building a bridge so that you don't end up with some shit when your Bitcoin is gone, if your Bitcoin is gone. So this is actually a big problem that many, many people today don't really care about, unfortunately. But I think it's a very, very crucial problem. Yeah, but luckily a rollup on Bitcoin can fix this, like Citria. And it's also much easier to solve when you have cool ideas and when you have a cool bridge design, which is the case for us. So today, the existing bridges are mostly multi-six of like three of five, six of 11, 11 of 15. But at the end of today, you expect these people to not to get hacked and you believe that everything will go right all the time. But like, is there a better solution is the question to ask? Well, on Ethereum world, we have a bunch of zk bridges. So if you kind of want to think about it, you know, maybe there's a possible zk bridge construction. Maybe there is even a trustless bridge where your money can never be stolen, you know? But the problem is, it doesn't exist, so there's always a risk assumption. So if someone else says you like, they made a trustless bridge to Bitcoin and their chain, they're just lying and you can show them this image. I do quite frequently and you should too. The kind of reason is, I think to start with, the gross extreme verifier, which is a leaky proof verifier on Bitcoin script is around 200, 800 megabytes, whereas the Bitcoin block size is four megabytes. So it's kind of a challenging environment to do the things that are being claimed. But luckily, you can still do non, almost normal multi-sig bridges, which I kind of trust me in my speeches, which I will explain. So the part of the reasons is Bitcoin script is very limited again. So this is how you multiply a number one. So 156 essentially duplicating and re-adding an element in stack. And this is how you do some, you know, operations on, which is very trivial to do in computers. But because Bitcoin environment is limited, you kind of end up with this extremely complex stuff. But luckily, there is a way, even though it's still complex to understand and implement, now it's much more practical and understandable for many people. The idea is called BTM. With BTM, you can kind of verify zk proofs. And using this, you can do ZKP-based bridges, which is what we're working today. The current construction is, has one of a trust assumption, which means you use your own proofs and then you only need one entity to be honest or funds to be secure. And if something goes wrong, then this one entity and slash and kick other people in the bridge construction too. So all the time, you only need one. What do I mean by this is, and also it's been developed by multiple companies in this space. So what do I mean by one of them? What do I mean by trusting in my eyes? Why this bridge is, you know, super cool? Why do I claim that it's a great construction? Why do I say things like this? Well, let me explain very quickly. So today, let's say you wanted to move your funds. On top is what we have today for the most cases, it's three or five multi-sig. And then on below, what we have is our bridge design and its security assumptions that I will explain. So if everything goes right, what happens is, on the top, three people gives you signatures or enters and exits. And then as long as these three people are active, then the funds are secure. On, on the our bridge design, on Clement sign, like BTM-based bridge designs or a trust in my bridge design, you only need one people to be honest. So it's designed in a very interesting way that only one people will be able to see your request and then they will fulfill it. And then you will be able to exit without losing your money. But the key thing is, what if something goes wrong, right? Well, on the top, it becomes really interesting. If three people out of five gets hacked, then your money can be moved anywhere. And the moment your money is moved anywhere, you essentially end up with non-existing BTC, which is zero. So on the top, if you get three people hacked, then it sucks. And this is actually a big risk. And today, a bunch of like billions of dollars are sitting on this environment or environments like this, which is really bad. And this is actually a big risk. And today, a bunch of like billions of dollars are sitting on this environment or environments like this, which is really bad. So, okay, I I said that the top is bad. What what happens on the bottom? But it's much better actually, if you think about it. Because let's say the remaining N minus one was hacked or tried to do other things, malicious things, you still need one people. And this is enough. So as long as everyone is not hacked, which is a very extreme edge case that I hope and sure that will never happen. You know, your funds will always be secure. So this is a very crucial point because I think on the top, people don't really understand how risky it is compared to bottom. And now there's a finally, finally a great way of doing the bottom. Which is a huge, huge win for everyone. Who is working on it. Oh yeah, by the way, we also did this one. So it's also a net win for us. Our bridge design is called Clementine. We have a white paper for it. You can read it on our website. I can also show you the link for it. It's like. HTTPS citria X Y Z. Clementine white paper. You can always see this one. So it's a very nice yet very complex bridge design, but you know, if you're into these and internet mathematics, you can always go with it. Yeah. And the the way to do it is on a high level a bit. This part is a bit tricky. So if you. Get lost, just. Don't mind it. It's fine. We can always talk later about it. There's a D K P where flyer of growth sixteen proof of seven hundred megabytes and then we split it into chunks. And then. What happens is if something goes wrong on the bridge execution. We can always observe it and we can always among these chunks. They will end up with, like, the people who are acting malicious. Will either be not be able to generate a valid proof or will they will try to generate a fake proof for the Z K bridge. And we as people or the operators can always see this happening and then we can always find out which part of the program is failed. And then through the U T X O's on Bitcoin, we can always put it on blockchain and then kick these people out in Clementine bridge site. And again, you only need one people out of N to do it. Like as long as this one is honest. Then they can kick other people using this algorithm, which is crazy. And yeah, like this is how it looks like on Bitcoin testnet four. We also executed it. It's a, it's a bit of a complex, but now we we know that it's possible to do. You can kick and slash people out from Bitcoin directly. And you only did one out of N to be honest for everything to work in terms of both security and both the execution. And yeah, this is how it looks like on the white paper, which. Which is not very easy to grasp, to be honest, even for me, I sometimes fail it. But if you want to the more simplify the example of it, I think I can do this one for you. It's like a person, a user locks their money into an N F M multi-sig, let's say ten BTC. And then when they want to exit, what happens is. An operator pays a person who wants to exit and then they later get reimbursed from the bridge. But if something goes wrong, if an operator claims to be paid you but didn't pay. Then anyone out of this N can slash and kick them out and then you will get your money back. So this is a very cool idea. All of this complex stuff, all the transactions you see here are looking like this because. Bitcoin is limited a bit. So. Maybe if we do some changes or if some changes could happen. Then we can do much better things. But the problem is. Again, it's hard to get these. But right now, if you were to get OPCTV or objects from stack kind of upgrades on Bitcoin, things could be much easier. Where closely following what's happening and then based on the changes, we'll be able to come up with much better designs. My guess is our rollups will be very useful. I say hopefully because everything in life is hope, but. I'm very bullish and very kind of sure that, you know, this is going to be a real breakthrough because. You know, for the first time in history of this secure enough and this capable of. Kind of blockchain on Bitcoin directly. And you know, it's really very nice. And it will also help Bitcoin security budget because right now the blocks are kind of empty miners are not extremely profitable for the security of the network. But if you're going to fix it too. And there'll be a bunch of new ideas that wasn't possible before, which is also going to be super nice. And yeah, again, like, we're not doing this for the sake of doing this because there's actually a demand for it and there actually people cares for it. So for example, we raised our seed round and round A last year. From some people known to be credible from what I heard. And you know, these people also realize the potential and the impact of it. So it's kind of a, you know. Good, good confirmation that something is going really right. And during this hackathon, during this program of A fac, you can also use our partners as well. You can find them in our website on the ecosystem page on which. Projects that we support. So for example, we have dynamic, you can do authentication stuff. We have blocks as a store records. We also have now Redstone Oracle two, which is live. We use it for the price feeds. And we have Hyperlane and Layer Zero, you know. They also support us if you want to do cross-chain stuff for this Bitcoin asset. And we have subgraphs, we have indexers, you know, we have safe wallet. It's kind of. Try to make sure that everything is ready for you to use during this stuff. And before going into why, I want to also show you that how EVM compatibility is. So. To kickstart your development journey, what you can do is you can directly hit our website, which is citria dot X Y Z. And this is our website. So in this website, you know, what we have is, so you're not going to never use the bridge at all during the hackathon because the bridge is. Midcomplex used and it's not intended for the end users fully. But you can use full set for your development journey. What you are going to do is you can use this page to get some funds. I believe you need some. Authentication mechanism here, either Discord or Twitter, but still. It gives you some funds at the end of the day. And you can just use MetaMask. So this is my test MetaMask other MetaMask address. I have one C two Bitcoin here. And I can use it. And if you go to our documentation, you will also be able to see more and more details. It's like if you want to do some simple deployments to understand what it looks like, we have some guides for it. And I can even show you like going into Linux website and then. You know, let's pick your random smart contract here, just a simple one. And then I can compile this. And then I can later deploy this just like any existing Ethereum chain, EVM compatible chain. So you can just pick MetaMask to do it and then I can just deploy it. And I will approve it. Yeah, and then the block is ready. So I kind of see it as well. And. You know, this is the block hash, this is the transaction hash, this is the contract address. And if you want to check, let's say you can go to our explorer two, which is also available on our website. So if you go to the explorer of Citri, which is the test that explorer. And then this is very much BlockScout. And I can just type the address to see the contract and then you can later verify it. And during your development, you can also interact with here. Like if you need to. Store a number. You can just store a number here, or if you do a bit of a complex contract, you can use remix for all your developments. But it doesn't also have to be only remix. So you can use VM. You know, you can use Ethos G S. Oops, I couldn't cite it, but anyways, you got the point. You can use Foundry, for example. Pretty much every existing tooling also works for Citri too. So. You can just use whatever, you know, on the Ethereum side of things and it will just work. Yeah, faucet is on the website. If the funds are not enough, just type it on the Discord or Telegram too, which I can just give you some more funds for your development. But pretty much everything is ready here. Also, if you go to our documentation again. I can quickly show you like on chain information section here, there's the RPC information, there's the chain ID information. And a bunch of other stuff too. And whenever you encounter any problem, you know, just let me know on the Discord and Telegram. And you know, I will make sure to ask for a question. We also have some smart contracts here for system smart contracts. That's more for Bitcoin compatibility of the bits. But you know, this may get a bit complex for you, but in case you want to check it out, everything is ready on documentation. You don't really need to run a full node. You can just use the existing RPCs. Yeah, I would say these are kind of the things that I would like to mention and I think I'm kind of. Finished it. So maybe it's time to. Tell you what the end goal is and why are we even doing all of these? So to do this, I'd like to invite my partner Jason here. To take it over and then give you some more insights on what we do and why these are made, why these things matter. So yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Talib. Yeah, it's been a, it's been long. It's been forty minutes. So. Do we want to like take like an intermission here, Mo's like maybe before I share my slides?
No problem. Just please go ahead. The time is plenty, actually.
Okay, okay. Let me jump right back into the slides. Are you guys able to see my slides?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna start here. And yeah, hey, everyone. My name is Jason. I'm the ecosystem manager for Citri. We'd like to thank Moss Kenjo again for having us, you know, on a Kindle, right? It's always good to reconnect as well. I've known Moss for a while now. So. Yeah, so Talid did a great job, right? In terms of like really going through our infrastructure. And like for a Kindle, we really want to work, you know, the builders in the community. And I think this part is mainly going to be. Talking about what we are looking for, right? And also about the hackathon. We're super, super excited to kickstart the hackathon. So jumping right into the applications that we are looking to kind of like tackle and to have in our ecosystem. It was briefly mentioned, but essentially with Citri, we are coming out with a term called. BAPs, right? So these are like Bitcoin applications that we are hoping to. Essentially identify and get them on our ecosystem, right? So our ecosystem is still at the foundational level. I'll I'll put it that way, right? As Solid mentioned, we're gearing up for mainnet. And right now, essentially we're in testnet right now. So you can go to citri dot X Y Z slash ecosystem, even on testnet itself. We already have thirty plus projects integrated, right? And in terms of, you know, infrastructure layer. And all the tooling that a developer should be having to ensure success in an ecosystem, we pretty much already have most of them already. And if you would like to see like, you know, throughout this hackathon, if you like to see. Any other tooling, any other support that you would like to have. Please reach out to us and we would love to have, you know, these tools on our ecosystem as well. So right now, you can check out some of these applications. I'm not going to specifically tell you guys what to build for this hackathon because again, like we don't want to hinder your creativity. We do have some examples already on the on the Wave Pack Hackathon page as well. But on top of that, you can check out our ecosystem. And these are all, we believe, truly novel ideas that are, you know, like building on top of Citrus tag and Citrus mission. These are all applications that are looking to also solve. All these, you know, like problems, right? And, you know, essentially. Built on Bitcoin. So take for example, I can talk a little bit of some of the projects, you know. That are already being built in our ecosystem, like for example, Tenari. Is the first self on Bitcoin financial platform. And I love, you know, that narrative that they're trying to push because like for Citri, essentially right now. You can think of creating like a Bitcoin fintech narrative, right? We are hyper focused on the D five vertical at the moment, but we do want to see more social. Applications, hopefully like truly a Kindle hackathon. We're able to see more of those applications being built on the ecosystem, right? We have Nectar, which is, you know, stablecoin. And we have Crest, which is quite cool as well. You know, essentially you don't need to do any kind of KYC. You're able to buy and trade Bitcoin. And Satsuma is a very cool DEX, a V model DEX on Citri. You can also check it out. So I'm gonna take you guys through like the support, right? Ultimately. When we talk about building on an ecosystem. For yourself as developers, builders, you're wondering what kind of support that we provide. So I want to talk a little bit about. The Origins program that we have. So we we have an incubator program called Citri Origins. And this is where we really curate the people coming into the program. We want to work with outstanding builders, founders, developers, you know. Thinkers like yourself and we want to support you guys, right? And this is not exactly like the. Catch all grant program. So at Citri, we essentially don't do grants, right? The grants that we do is very exclusive, like we work with a Kindle, for example, to distribute the grants because we don't believe in. Just, you know, doing a catch all strategy and dishing out grants all over the place. And hopefully, you know, we get builders to stick around. So Origins is actually looking to solve that, solve that problem. We really want to work closely with you. And we, when we mention closely, we do work closely with you, right? So. The incubation program, essentially, if you have an idea or you already have a working product. Be it if you're a solo developer or if you're, you already have a team that is building with you. You can always apply to this program as well. And truly a Kindle hackathon, we are hoping to get more. Projects that are building along with us and eventually being able to onboard it. To be onboarded onto the Origins program, right? So the Origins program. Essentially, you can think of us as an extension of your team, right? We help a lot with the whole branding and narrative as well, your go to market. And this is especially, we believe especially valuable because. Again, like we are EVM compatible. But I think, as I I believe Moss did mention that we are one of the first few projects is. Building on the Bitcoin ecosystem to come on the the Kindle hackathon, Wave Hack as well, right? So. So again, like maybe the Bitcoin ecosystem might be unfamiliar to you. So that's where we add value, right? And on top of that, you know, we help with the fundraising part as well. We help with the product. We'll link you guys up to our product team, you know, to ensure that you're delivering. Essentially your MVP and we'll take you from zero to a hundred. So that's kind of like a rough summary of origins. And you know, these are some illustrations here. So some images here that I'm showing is from our first hackathon. First hacker house, sorry. So this was back in Istanbul. Where we invited teams from all over the world to come over to Istanbul to hack with us, right? And we worked very closely to curate, you know, how the ecosystem would look like, right? So again. You caught us at the very right time, right? We are looking to gear up for mainnet. So this is the right time to really jump into the ecosystem early and work very, very closely. With the core team and at the same time, working with all these BAPs, right? These Bitcoin applications. That are already building with us because like fostering an ecosystem, we want to create this synergies, right? We want you to be able to work with all these other projects as well and, you know, not to build alone. And and yeah, the hacker house was super fun. We talked all about again, you know, like go to market stuff, farming and stuff, and we ate. Lots and lots of kebabs in Istanbul as well. So super excited and. Yeah, so leading up, you know, like concluding with the Wave Pack as well. Our next second house is actually during September in Istanbul. So we are hoping like again, like true, you know, maybe this first batch of like Wave Pack. Builders were able to really meet you, right? We want to engage with you. And I potentially invite you guys to the hacker house as well. Okay, so I'll go through this very, very quickly. Again, like in terms of the schedule, like all of this is available on the. On the Wave Pack Hackathon page already. So right now, we're prepping for it. And you know, for the first wave, we want you guys to build with us. And essentially it will lead, we have four waves currently for this program that we're running with a Kindle. And it will lead with a demo day that we haven't announced the location yet. But hopefully post the demo day, we're able to also invite. You know, a couple of you guys, right? Projects that we really like to come over to to the hacker house in Istanbul. So all this information is available, including the allocation. And and don't worry, right? So we we are able to, you know, extend more support. Beyond the supposed allocation that is over here. And this part is where I want to go through a little bit more, right? So the judging criteria. How we are looking at it, like as I mentioned, you know, we're focused on all these different, you know, like applications that are building on the D five vertical, but. We want more social applications as well, potentially. And. First, you know, like first part of it is all about the originality and the impact, right? So we want, this is like twenty percent, you know, like. To be honest, you can forget about the the percentage, right? We we generally want to evaluate everything as a whole. But originality and impact is very important because we want to know if the project. Is, you know, tackling an exciting challenge, right? And I'll I'll give you an example, right? So take for example, one of the projects that we've been incubating. Right? They're based out of Philippines. And essentially they are building a application that can be used both online and offline, right? So even for offline, you're able. So even for offline, you're able to do crypto transactions uh using S M S, right? And this is solving an actual problem back home for them, like in the Philippines, you know, like internet connection might not be as great. And they are looking to solve that problem at the same time, kind of like shift it over to the Bitcoin ecosystem and also leveraging on Citrus. Infrastructure and tech to make this happen, right? So that is one of the best, you know, ideas in terms of that originality, and they are, they are focusing a lot on the impact, and that's something that we really want. So looking forward, uh, like moving forward from there, it's also the functionality of things. So when you submit, you know, uh, your M V P, your, your application, we wanna be able to play around with it. So this would, you know, fall into the, you know, how we judge it, and also the user experience and uh technical, you know, your codebase. Documentation, so documentation is important as well, because. We want users to be able, you know, for us as users as well, we want to be able to use your application very easily, we want to understand what you're trying to do. And you know, the use cases as well, right? So how can we use this application? How could I potentially share this uh with my friends and you know, like, I wanna talk about this idea, right? And last but not least would be the Citriah and Bitcoin alignment, right? So again, um, Talib went through a good forty minutes, uh, you know, of how Citriah is different. And I don't think I wanna go through that, so you guys can always review that, but we would love to. See how, you know, like potentially, again, like applications. Uh, and another, and another example, and another example that I can give, take for example, like Crest, right? So again, like with Citriah's alignment and narrative, they wanna create, you know, like a no K Y C Bitcoin trading application, right? They leverages on, you know, like Citriah's uh infrastructure to enable Bitcoin, you know, to be traded, right, very easily. So it's the alignment with, you know, what we've been talking about, the narrative, you know, like Bitcoin fintech as well, social applications. So um, yeah, so this is, you know, like twenty percent, uh how we are looking at outstanding projects. The last but not least would be the iterative growth, and um, and we know that essentially right now, we're running four waves uh with Wavehack Hackathon. And all I wanna say here is that each wave will be judged independently. But consistent progress, you know, is, will be rewarded, right? So we want you guys to be coming in, maybe on the first wave, you're just uh iterating on your idea, right? You wanna get some feedback with us, you can let us know, hey, you know, like, this is very early stage. This is what we wanna do, right, potentially on the next few waves as well. So that, that's fine, if you're starting on the first wave, that's what we wanna, you know, I engage with you from there. But if you're starting in from like the second, third wave, probably your product is a little bit more developed already, and you wanna potentially explore pivoting to like the Bitcoin ecosystem. That works as well, so that is essentially what the iterative growth means, right? And we wanna build long-term with you, it's not like, again, like when I spoke about Origins incubation program. Uh, we want to build long-term, like I said, right? So it's not just, your journey doesn't stop here, right? It doesn't stop at wave one, two, three, four, it goes beyond that. So yeah, um, talking about the infrastructure, talking about, you know, the support that we're providing. Is, you know, like, we wanna highlight that it's the best time to build BAPs on Citriah and Bitcoin, right? Um, again, we don't wanna tell you exactly what to build, there are some examples on the Wavehack uh, you know, Hackathon page already. But we want you to think about more about the opportunity that this presents, right? Enabling, you know, like Bitcoin D five, for example, right? Because everyone, you know, um, there's so many holders of Bitcoin and liquidity is kind of like stagnant, but with. Citriah, we enable so many existing, you know, like uh building upon existing use cases, right? And uh, just let your ideas go well, that's what we're trying to say. Okay, so um, the two categories that uh we are looking at is financial BAPs, social BAPs. And again, more examples on the Wavehack page. Uh, we love novel and original ideas, we want you guys to wow us, and at the same time. It could be, again, like just an idea on wave one, and you wanna like really engage with us to try to build upon it. So we love the structure of how Wavehack, you know, is, especially with a Kindle, and really, really looking forward to uh, you know, the ideas that you have. Uh, last but not least, I think talking a little bit about the rules, so again emphasizing. New or existing projects are welcome, we don't mind if, you know, this is an existing project that you or your team is already working on. Um, and you're looking to like kind of position the product again with Citrus narrative, that's perfectly fine for us. And um, you know, integrating with us, you know, with the technology is definitely mandatory. And for submission, um, you know, a GitHub uh repo is good, you know, if you have a demo link. And ultimately, you know, for the timeline, we want to look at, you know, it goes beyond the pitch deck as well, probably a working M V P that we can play with. And uh, if we really like the idea, essentially, right, uh, again, like the expansion of the team is. To help you, right, to build upon that as well, like we'll help you with the go-to-market, we could link you with our product guys as well to help you further develop the product. And I essentially support you to deploy on the ecosystem on the long run, and this means further support, it could be monetary support as well. Um, but yeah, so really looking forward to these submissions, I think. That's pretty much the end for me, I don't wanna go on and ramble, um, but yeah, I think what I would like to reserve. You know, the last five, ten minutes would be more towards a Q and A, I think that would be more valuable, and Talib and myself will be here. To answer those questions, yeah.
Yep, um, yeah, thank you for your presentation, uh, Jason and Talib. So yeah, um, the, from now on, as Jason mentioned, so we move on to the live Q and A session. And yeah, anyone can ask the Citriah team anything about Citriah, so feel free to comment on YouTube. Um, yeah, so we got some questions on the YouTube already. And so let me read it, uh, let's jump in and see what you guys have it.
Yeah, bring it.
Yeah, uh, the first one, uh, from the third web, thank you for your question. So that besides being an Ezekiel Olap, um, how does Citriah plan to scale Bitcoin-based? The apps uh compared to other solutions like Stacks or Rootstock? Yeah, this is a general question about, um, yeah, Citriah, so maybe Talib or uh Jason?
Yeah, I can, I can take the questions, it's okay. Uh, yeah, I mean, there, there are two sides of scaling, right? I think the first one is in terms of the technical stuff, Rootstock and Stacks, they're side chains, they're not rollups. So the secure and plus they don't have a B T M based bridge too. So the security assumptions of Stacks and Rootstock are compared to Citriah is like a bit too inferior, to be honest. And on the non-technical side of things, which I believe the question is more focused on. Then they don't have a program like Origins, and they don't have the synergy that we're trying to keep up. Um, and that we try to um raise for the future of, you know, Citriah plus Bitcoin. So the thing is, we help it, we help to founders with pretty much every stage of the product in terms of, you know. Um, fundraising, in terms of support, in terms of uh, what to do, market strategy, how to go market and stuff like that. So we do these supports one-on-one with every single one of them, Jason particularly works about it. And uh, we believe that this approach is much better and this ecosystem will be um much more successful. One particular example is, for example, we have a Bitcoin Max stablecoin project coming up. And uh, this project today exists on us just because we brainstormed and worked and supported them throughout all of this. It's going to be released very soon, you will see it, and I hope you will enjoy it, but the key point is we do very, very. Um, extensive support to the builders on us in, as part of the Origins. Even if you are a part of the Origins, me and Jason and my other colleague who's not here. We spent a bunch of our time talking and helping, giving feedbacks, so I don't really see this much effort on the other ecosystems and mix coin. Um, yeah, that would be my answer.
Okay, cool, uh, thank you for your answer, Talib, so uh, let's go to the next question. So that it's from Mark, um, that he said, uh, he said, uh, it's a fork required to build on the lolap.
Yeah, yeah, there are no forks required, we kind of assumed that Bitcoin will not change ever at all, so decided to ship based on that. Um, yeah, we don't need any forks to Bitcoin, to do, to, to do this. But again, in my presentation, as I mentioned, some forks would be nice in terms of reducing the costs, making everything much more efficient. For example, if the next update could be OP Cat, then the bridge would be even more amazingly good, but I don't think we'll get OP Cat. If we get OP C T V plus check sick from stack to Bitcoin, then it will still be very useful for us too. But again, like, we don't need any forks to go live, and in fact, we will go live soon as well. So um, we don't need any forks, it, it will work based on this.
Okay, great, um, yeah, I think for now we have the, that's all from the community. Like, if you guys have any questions, feel free to uh ask on the YouTube comments. Um, the, I think that one question I would like to add from my side. So this is for the developer who never built on the uh Citriah ecosystem. So for those who haven't built on it, uh, from what should they start and what should they refer to? So maybe that could help for the newbie on the, yeah, Citriah.
Yeah, I mean, if you're not an E V M developer, then you need to learn E V M and how it works. If you are an already existing E V M developer, actually, on the technical level, you don't need anything, because you can just use existing E V M knowledge. But if you want to do things even more higher and to the extreme, then you may try to learn how Bitcoin works, and I try to come up with some ideas based on it. But I would say ninety-nine percent, the existing Ethereum pushing machine knowledge should be enough to work on ideas. But I think you, like, ideally, you should have some intuition of Bitcoin and what makes it premium, so that you can design apps that fits better. So it's like, you know, um, what, what's, what, what matters on Bitcoin is today is that say Bitcoin makes stable coins, then. If you know that why Bitcoin's premium, you can do a better one, but you don't need anything else other than E V M to implement smart contracts, it's all E V M.
Okay, yeah, that's great, like, uh, it's, you know, that in the market, the most people, I mean, the people start mostly from the E V M. Because like, you know, that is how smart contracts start. So I think that that's great, like many people can start from that, and yeah, it's easy to uh integrate. Okay, so I think that's all for the today's question, so yeah. Um, by the way, if you missed some parts of this online session, don't worry. Uh, this session is being recorded and will be published immediately after this live stream on YouTube, so everyone can watch again. Uh, I think that's all the question, and yeah, let's move on to the conclusion, so right. Uh, we are nearing the end of today's uh online workshop, so before we wrap up, uh, Jason Talib. Uh, do you have any final message you'd like to share with the builders and potential Citriah Wavehack supporters? Yeah, maybe uh, the Talib, you can start, or, yeah.
I can start now, that's Jason's take.
Yeah, yeah, I'm extremely.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm extremely bullish on what we're doing, needs to say. I think for the first time in many years of Bitcoin, there's something this exciting coming up. As part of the rollup, and I'm really glad that I'm part of it, and I also would like to see you becoming a part of it as well. And I promise you will not be disappointed uh on that end, if you become a part of this. Um, yeah, looking forward to check all cool ideas and submissions, I would say. Also, very grateful to work with Akim, so.
Thank you, yeah, go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, yeah, on my end, I think it's, I, I share the same sentiment, right? Uh, super proud to be working with a correct team, you know, like we, yeah, we love our team for sure, and you know, at the same time, thank you so much for having us as well, Moos, uh, on a Kindle. The work with, you know, like the Kindle community as well. Um, we, you know, the Kindle community, we're quite familiar with it, you know, you guys are growing as well, and you know, we're hoping to engage with all these builders. That are particularly curious about the Bitcoin ecosystem, right? Because again, E V M compatible, you don't need to reinvent the wheel, you can very easily jump in, but at the same time, you're also. Jumping into a new ecosystem, which is, you know, like Bitcoin, right? And um, and yeah, uh, on my end, this is all the support that we can provide for the builders and developers. And if you're still curious about, you know, to what extent that we actually go to support those projects. Um, reach out to us, right, reach out to me, reach out to Talib, and I will be happy to chat and really understand, you know, like what you're looking to build, uh, especially on Citriah. And how can we support and through Wavehack? Um, yeah, super excited, looking forward to, to the submissions, uh, to your submissions, to your ideas, and uh, looking forward to chatting with you, yeah.
Yeah, I'm excited too as well, yeah, thank you for encouraging builders, yeah, it was fantastic session today. Uh, big thank you to everyone for your active participation, and of course, special thanks to Jason and Talib. Uh, for sharing such insightful knowledge and for answering all questions. It was truly a valuable learning experience for all of us. Okay, so as we wrap up, uh, let's keep the momentum going. So the Citriah build theme is, uh, as Jason explained before, uh, build BAPs on Citriah. So this challenge uh invites you to unlock Bitcoin's full potential with Ziky technology. So grants of the two thousand dollar will be distributed during the first wave, which is gonna start from the twentieth June. And from the third wave onward, uh, they will go up to three thousand dollar. So with a total of the ten thousand dollar will be awarded through the Citriah Wavehack. Yeah, this is very exciting, and it's a great opportunity to contribute to Citriah ecosystem. And showcase your technical skills and present your innovative ideas. So and don't forget, this Wavehack program isn't just about winning grants, it's also a chance to become an early contributor to a growing Citriah community. Yeah, so for ongoing resources and support as you build, as uh. Jason mentioned, and keep an eye on the Citriah X and uh, a Kindle X, and stay tuned for upcoming sessions. And yeah, we are here to help, so if you have any questions or need guidance, don't hesitate to reach out through a Kindle or Citriah official channels. On X and Telegram or Discord. Yeah, all right, uh, that's all for today, I think, yeah, thank you, Jason and Talib, uh, for leading this session. And yeah, of course, thank you to everyone who joined us. So yeah, we look forward to seeing you at the next session, and also we can't wait to see what you guys build. Okay, so have a great day, everyone, and thank you, guys.
Thanks for hanging out, and uh, see you guys, let's have a nice sec.
Yeah, uh, let's keep on building, guys, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay, yeah, thank you.